Steve Grober, to be followed by Don Bacon.
Thank you for seeing me today, ladies and gentlemen. I live in Montero. I’ve had my home there since 1978 or nine. There’s an old saying that “to a hammer everything looks like a nail.” And there’s an old, famous experiment where they put some children in a room, or one at a time, with a Hershey bar, said, “Now you be a good boy or girl. I’ll be back in a little while. Don’t eat the Hershey bar.” Over 98 percent of the kids, within, I think it was 20 minutes or so, had eaten the Hershey bar. They just couldn’t help themselves. And then there’s the story about the scorpion who wants to cross the river. He asks the duck to give him a lift. The duck says, “That’s crazy. You’ll sting me. I’ll die.” And he says, “No, I won’t. I would die too.” So he says, “That makes sense.” Halfway across, the scorpion stings him. “Why did you do that? We’re both going to die,” he says. “I’m a scorpion. I couldn’t help myself.” Well, in your positions of power, you get the opportunity to make decisions that affect many of our lives, and sometimes all of our lives here on the Peninsula. And the old saying that “politics is the art of compromise” is true, but occasionally we need to do what’s right. And sometimes doing what’s right does not stand up to compromise. There are two sides, I think, in this controversy. There seems to be controversy regarding the local coastal plan. One side says they’re NIMBYs, environmentalist types, and I think there are. But it’s not in my backyard. It’s really not in our backyard. The coast side is a resource, a treasure, for everyone who lives in San Mateo County. And if we were to damage that resource, we’re damaging something that’s precious to all of us. Going from 1% to 2%, and not including the affordable and low-income housing in that, is really a tremendous jump. It’s a 100 percent jump. It’s a doubling of what’s going on now. And it’s also something that Einstein talked about, compound interest being the most powerful force in the universe. That’s going to just keep growing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don Bacon, to be followed by Lenny Roberts.
Honorable Supervisors, my name is Don Bacon. I’m from Montero. The most frequent and serious accusation made against you last week was that your subcommittee is recommending that the midcoast grow at twice the rate of Half Moon Bay. And I’ve submitted a statistical analysis to you this morning that finds this claim to be demonstrably false. It includes a numerical chart and graph and narrative description that I would ask that you examine, that shows actually the truth is that the subcommittee’s recommendation would achieve a developmental parity between the midcoast and Half Moon Bay for about the next 20 years, after which Half Moon Bay would assume an increasing disproportion of the housing burden. A developmental parity between Half Moon Bay and midcoast is obviously desirable. We form one community. And I have every confidence that you will base your planning policy on the facts and not on a falsehood, regardless of how many times it is repeated to you. Thank you.
Okay. Lenny Roberts, to be followed by Paul Perkovic.
Good morning. I’m Lenny Roberts. I’m speaking for Committee for Green Foothills. I have a couple of points here. The standard of review, as you know, for this update is the Coastal Act. And although it was undoubtedly helpful for the Board to have the set of principles to guide the growth on the midcoast, these principles cannot substitute for review and analysis under the Coastal Act. Right now, I don’t believe the revisions adequately implement Chapter Three of the Coastal Act. Specifically, both the timing and the adequacy of public services, especially highway capacities on Highway 92 and Highway One, cannot accommodate the ultimate build-out allowed by the current LCP as you are going to revise it. I would like to make four points here. First is that we absolutely have to have an effective mandatory lot merger program in order to bring the build-out numbers into better conformity with the infrastructure capacity. Voluntary measures do not work, and some of the incentives proposed, such as the floor area bonus and reduction of parking requirements, would be detrimental to the community character that we all agree is what makes the San Mateo coast side a special place. We also have something that hasn’t been talked about, which is the unbuildable legacy lots. There are a number of lots that are underwater in Princeton on the unstable cliffs at Seal Cove. They’re crossed by the Seal Cove Fault, or they’re entirely covered with wetlands or other sensitive habitats in the Montecito Riparian Corridor, which was studied a few years ago. You need to develop a program for retirement of these lots so that development will not happen because it would be inconsistent with the Coastal Act policies protecting sensitive habitats and hazards and prime agricultural lands. The third thing is that no new residential subdivision should be allowed within the urban midcoast until there is adequate highway capacity, water, sewer, and urban runoff controls to accommodate that growth. The final thing is, on the Big Wave project, we would like to work with the Board and the staff to craft an approach to that project that is not tied to this LCP update process.
Thank you very much. Paul Perkovic, followed by Joyce Fancher-Halpin. Thank you. Joyce Fancher-Halpin. Gail Erickson, to be followed by Tom Ballantyne. They’re not here. So, Gail, it’s your turn.
Thank you.
Tom Ballantyne will follow you.
Thank you very much, Supervisors. I appreciate the time to speak with you. I hopefully will be very brief. My name is Gail Erickson. I live in El Granada. I’m also on the Midcoast Community Council. And I’m here today to ask you to please go along with the recommendations done by the Planning Commission. These are the people that have studied this. They know a lot. They’ve made some good recommendations, particularly setting a 1 percent growth limit. My concerns right now are concerns I’m hearing from my neighbors, people complaining to me about basically traffic congestion, water availability, and flooding. These are problems that we have now. And what I would like to do is I would like to ask the Supervisors to start and address some of these problems that we’re having now. And increasing the 2% within 10 years, if we have problems now that are not being addressed, it’ll be a disaster. I hate to think of what things would be like in 10 years if the population has doubled and we can’t handle the problems we have right now. So I really do recommend that the Board of Supervisors start to address those things right now, and I’ll repeat those again. These are the complaints that I hear all the time. Traffic congestion. We know, everyone agrees, that is a big problem. Doubling the population would make this even, obviously, you can tell how much worse it would be. The other is water. There are communities, particularly Moss Beach and Montero, where the water is not as available. It’s a problem. It’s a problem now. And then you also have heard about the terrible flooding. There are lots of things that we need to research. For example, researching something I think is really important, with all the tree cutting that’s going on right now due to added development that’s happening, what is the impact of that? We should constantly taking all these trees down. That’s going to have an impact on the flooding, and that’s something that I think we should be researching right now. So I thank you very much for addressing all of this, but I really hope you put your emphasis on those three things. Doing something about traffic, water availability, and the flooding problem we have. Those are problems we have now with the population that’s here right now.
Thank you. Tom Ballantyne, followed by Chris Vogel. Tom is not here. Chris Vogel, followed by George Mazingo.
Good morning, President Gordon, and members of the Board. My name is Chris Vogel, and I live in El Granada. And my main concern here is expansion of Highway One. If you build it, they will come. It would be close to catastrophic for the midcoast. They will come, and they will build their mega houses, and they will fill in open space, the open space that remains and which we hold so dear. Please reconsider, or don’t consider, the expansion of Highway One to four lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel. George Mazingo, followed by Lawrence Valente.
Good morning. I’m George Mazingo, Governmental Affairs Director for the San Mateo County Association of Realtors. First of all, if I can be presumptive enough to extend the commendations of my association for the wonderful work that the Subcommittee did on this project. It is, I think, a truly compromise that all of us can hopefully live with and move forward. There’s just a few minor points we’d like to talk about. One of them, as previously discussed by Ms. Coleman at your last meeting, the restrictions on the second units may have some legal issues, and I believe that is being addressed. And also, in the practical matter of this administration of the incomes of the tenants, how does the tenant provide information to the landlord about whether they can qualify for these units? And then if the tenant’s income increases above the low-income limit, are they evicted? And finally, just very briefly, the landlord should be allowed to rent these units to family members. A few years ago, Mr. Martin from the City of Daly City indicated that 50 percent of the second units within his jurisdiction were rented to family members. So if the family member’s income is in excess of this limit, they would not be able to move in. So we would appreciate some reconsideration. I have a letter with comment for your review. And secondly, again, we’d like to recommend you on your efforts, if there is any possibility of extending the time for the voluntary lot merger to three years instead of 18 months, but the current recommendation wouldn’t be adequate, I suppose. And then, that’s all. Thank you. I have this letter for your consideration.
Thank you. Lawrence Valente, followed by Tom Judge.
Board of Supervisors, my name is Lawrence Valente, and I own, our family owns two lots on El Granada Boulevard. They’re two lots adjacent to each other, 5,000 square feet apiece. With the deeding of five-foot frontage, they are now 4,950 square feet each. And we’ve owned those lots since 1988, and our street is pretty much built out on El Granada Boulevard. And I wanted to appeal to the Board to reconsider merging these two lots. I know we can get a variance when we want to build, but I just think it’s a situation where we’re going to incur a lot of extra time and money for something like this. And I was wondering if the Board could reconsider about lots that are over 3,500 square feet but under 5,000 square feet.
Thank you for your comments. Tom Judge, followed by Jim Grady.
Good morning. My name is Tom Judge. I’m a resident, tenured resident of Montero, and also an owner of undeveloped property in Moss Beach. I would like to voice my support for the Midcoast Community Council and for the Planning Commission. Over the past few years, I’ve been impressed with the efforts of the Midcoast Community Council and many members of the community to establish clear guidelines for the development on the coast. People have devoted countless hours for this process with no financial incentive, and the beneficiaries of this efforts are not only the residents of the coast, but also the many visitors that come to the coast. People recognize that we have a treasure on the coast that we have to preserve. The LCP, as it developed, represents a compromise already. It represents a series of meetings that were opened to all people on all sides of the issue, and I see no reason for further compromises. In particular, I oppose any move towards relaxing restrictions on development of non-conforming lots. Those lots were first drawn up about a century ago, and I think the planners at that time envisioned a community something like the Sunset District in San Francisco. Fortunately, that vision has changed. We now have a community of larger homes, houses on larger lots than the original lots, surrounded by gardens and yards. And that establishes the character of the community that we should preserve, that we should work to preserve. I see no reason to, to my knowledge, for at least the last 35 years, there’s been a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, and I see no reason to reduce that limit. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Jim Grady, followed by Melissa Hipper. Is Jim here? Okay. All right. Melissa Hipper, followed by Marina Starria.
Thank you, President Gordon and Supervisors. I’m Melissa Hipper. I’m here on behalf of the Sierra Club. I would like to just say that we support a slow-growth approach to the midcoast. The 1% seems sensible to us. As you know, the Sierra Club is a strong advocate for smart growth. We are currently very much involved in the Bay Meadows Two, as an example, of the kind of smart growth development we believe is appropriate for San Mateo County. The two main concerns we have regarding the midcoast is infrastructure capacity, the ability to accommodate growth. There are serious concerns regarding water and roads in particular, and the ecological sensitivity of the coast, and many people have already spoken to that, as well as the sort of value as an attraction to people besides just us in the county. I want to just echo Lenny Roberts with the Committee for Green Foothills’ comments, and say that we support the Planning Commission’s recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Marina Starria, followed by Yolanda Shores.
Good morning. Thank you for having us again. I’ve lived on the coast since 1964 and have watched it grow. I’d like to see some very smart planning of the growth. I think, I have a question. What happens when the build-out happens in 33 to 33 years? I haven’t had that question answered. And the 75 absolute number seems to be reasonable to me. The comments, I think that we do need a four-lane highway from Miramonte Point Road to Princeton. It’ll be safer. It’ll cause less pollution because the cars aren’t stalled on the road during congestion. And if we plan it correctly and have pedestrian and bicycle paths, that would be great. I think all housing should be counted in the LCP program, including the affordable housing. Most speakers last meeting spoke of quality-of-life issues for themselves and asked you to fix things. Yet most of the traffic on the roads have one passenger per car. Most of the people living on the coast work on the bayside of the Peninsula. The LCP should reflect the fact that American society needs to change the way we live. We can no longer afford to have long commutes to work. We need more pedestrian-friendly communities where we can all use the services we need by walking, or at least within a 10-minute drive or public transportation. We should not depend on one or two more cars per family to access services, including work. We should live in a way to preserve our natural resources, such as water, energy, open space, forests, clean air, and yet be able to share them with other members of our community, including growth for the coast. This attitude, this attitude of “now we have ours and no one else can live here” will not work, and we should all, as residents, work together to make life quality for us and for the future residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Shores, followed by Joe Chamberlain.
Good morning, Honorable Board of Supervisors. Yolanda Shores, President of the Carrillo Unified School District Governing Board. I’m here to make general comments and look to the future and working with you. It’s a two-page letter that I’ll hand to you in a second. I’m not going to read the full gist of it. It’s somewhat general in nature. But specifically, “Providing adequate educational facilities for our children must go hand-in-hand with efforts to protect the environment. Because a school district is charged with the responsibility for educating all the youth of the community, including the provision of facilities within which to do so, the district needs the latitude to develop appropriate range facilities, including consideration of options for programmatic needs, as well as appropriately-sized facilities dealing with growth and population issues. Because the unique relationship of school districts with cities and counties within the coastal zone, the district requests the support of the county in its efforts to comply with its constitutional responsibilities. With principles in mind, the district, which are, again, written in the prior page, the district provides the following comments concerning the county’s local coastal program. Any time that property is taken from the California tax rolls and designated open space, that designation negatively impacts property and income tax revenues, and consequently the revenue available to fund public services, including public schools. This impact on school funding must be kept in mind when decisions are made to remove property from state tax rolls. The CUSD Board encourages an appropriate balance of open space, other public or tax-exempt property, and private property for the future needs of the San Mateo County. The Carrillo Unified School District Board also requests the county officials be mindful of the impacts of open space reservations and development of public schools, a vital public resource for the county’s children. For example, the Golden Gate National Recreation Area’s recent acquisition of 4,000 acres of open-spaced land is a great addition of land for the park system and the residents, and the county residents, but the designated space also completely surrounds Montero and Moss Beach. I speak based on the fact that there will be growth on the coast, that there are issues in terms of open space in which there are large constraints based on agricultural use, hilly terrain, and geography.
Okay. Thank you very much. No, thank you very much. Two minutes, Yolanda.
The district proposes the county.
Yolanda, two minutes, please. Thank you very much. We will work with you. Joe Chamberlain, followed by Robert Kulda.
Good morning, Mr. President, Honorable Supervisors. Joe Chamberlain, Lobitos Canyon, Unincorporated San Mateo County. Always a pleasure to speak with you and have the opportunity to be heard. I’m here today to speak with you on behalf of the San Mateo County League for Coastside Protection, a political action committee, as you know, that’s very active on the coast side. And we submitted a letter, I believe, at the last public hearing of our position. I’d like to reiterate today the importance of supporting and honoring the report from the Coastal Commission staff, because they have evaluated what we’re putting forward here from our county as it applies to the Act and what is legally feasible. So I urge you to consider, in the context of what the staff has said, what we put forward, because we want to do the best we can for our county, but at the same time, we are going to have to comply with the Coastal Act as it was approved by the people of the United States, people of the State of California. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Robert Kulda, and I see Jim Grady has arrived. I’ve already called his name, but Jim, you’re going to speak next. Okay? Mr. Kulda, followed by Jim Grady.
Robert Kulda, El Granada. You guys have been working on this for a long time. You’ve heard all the arguments over and over again. I can see it in your faces. You’ve done your research. You’ve done your analysis. I ask you guys to stick to your guns, stick to the recommendations of your own Subcommittee, and preserve the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Grady, followed by Kirsten Jabe.
Hi.
Good morning, Jim.
I’m a councilperson in Half Moon Bay, but I’m speaking today as an individual. And first of all, I’d like to thank you for taking the time to really hear all the different perspectives that are being presented by the public, both last week and this week. I really just wanted to talk about four things very briefly. The first one is that I think there’s an opportunity for more collaboration between the city’s LCP update and the county’s. What happens on the coast side affects certainly Half Moon Bay and vice versa. And so I just wanted to put that forth as an opportunity. You know that we’re well in the middle of ours, as you are with yours, and I think there’s an opportunity to look at this as a comprehensive plan as opposed to two pieces. That’s the first one. The second one is the growth rate. We passed Measure D a number of years ago, actually, five and a half years ago, and that limits the growth in Half Moon Bay to 1%. What happens outside of Half Moon Bay puts significant pressure on the infrastructure, particularly on Highway One and 92. And when I looked at your own, the county’s, traffic analysis, the mitigation analysis that was distributed about two weeks ago, I think there’s about $30 million in there for all of Highway One on the coast side. And what I’d ask you to look at is, instead of a four-lane road all the way through, is to look at the safety and other improvements that could be done, so that at turn lanes, you could have three lanes or four lanes going back to two lanes. I don’t think we need a highway running from the two one-lanes in the tunnel all the way to the city limits. The next item is really the open space, a double slide to right-of-way. That’s a unique opportunity to preserve a very unique piece of land, and with that, that’s my two minutes. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Kirsten Jabe, followed by Juliet Kulda.
Hi, I’m Kirsten Jabe from El Granada. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I support the work being done by the Subcommittee, and I do not support the proposal from the Planning Commission to restrict midcoast residential growth to 1%, nor do I support establishing sublimits for each community. There exist now many restrictions and regulations and expenses with regards to building on the coast, and if a lot owner proposes a residential use which conforms to all the existing regulations and restrictions, and they have water and utilities, I believe they should be able to build their home. We don’t need more restrictions on our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Juliet Kulda, followed by Brad Jabe.
Good morning, President Gordon and Honorable Supervisors. My name is Juliet Kulda. I have lived on the coast for over 10 years, and the last five years I’ve lived in El Granada. I’m a Realtor, but today I’m speaking to as a mother of six. My family, we love the natural beauty on the coast. That’s one of the reasons we live there. As you know, it’s a beautiful place to live. We’re very, very happy that we have a lot of open space, thousands of acres of open-space property, state beaches, land that’s zoned for agriculture, and a lot of county property and state property. And it’s wonderful that we have a lot of area, and I know that will never be built on in my lifetime. We’re glad that we have protection for that. There are some lots left, some vacant lots left, that are zoned for residential. I believe that they should be allowed to, people that own these lots should be allowed to build houses on them. Many of the vacant lots are not buildable because of all the different reasons we know. They don’t have water, they’re too steep, they don’t have roads, they’re in riparian corridors, et cetera. So many of the buildable lots are gone, but the ones that are there, there’s already a lot of, a huge process, as we all know, to build, and to add another layer on top of that, I think is going to be an expense for everybody, including the county and the people that live there. Another concern I have for my family is that my children, as they grow up, I hope will be able to live on the coast. We hope to be there for a long time, maybe forever. And right now, the houses, the cost of living is so expensive, and I believe that goes hand-in-hand with the building. As building gets more expensive, also the median prices of homes will get more expensive. So if we could just keep, I’m against the 1% growth restriction. I believe many people on the coast are against it. I was at the initial workshops two or three years ago where George Bergman was at El Granada School, and there were over 100 people that came out to both those meetings that were against this 1% growth restriction. These people aren’t here today because they’re out working. There are many people against this, and I also support the Subcommittee’s recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Brad Jabe, followed by David Beaumont.
Thank you for your focus. The line of understanding that Juliet was talking about, I think, is really important to understand. When I came here, I paid $200 to have my sewer connection transferred and able to be used on my property. Now it’s $16,000. I paid $3,000, and now that’s $30,000 for water. We don’t have storm drains. We don’t have lighting. We have to have some form, we have to have a lot of houses built out on our properties to actually get into the city-street program. I think that that is something that we need to focus on. As a real estate agent, I’m constantly representing people and getting into headaches because there are no storm drains. We’ve got the natural flow from the hills coming down to people who can’t handle them. The streets aren’t even as good as the Public Works Department does. They have very little to work with when there isn’t a real storm drain program. I do not support this slow build-out in the 1%. Half Moon Bay has an incredible headache. You’ve got people who are trying to build houses that come, and now, once they’ve got the money necessary to propose to build their property out, have these sewer connections and water connections paid for, now they have to carry a house, carry the cost of a lot for a year or two because there’s not enough, because they have a lottery or because they have some lottery, or because they have some process in which there's a holdoff for them to actually start construction. Please focus on that. What happens to the people? What happens to them having to sit there and carry the cost of everything they've paid for up to the point that their plans are presented to you? Thank you.
Thank you. David Beaumont, followed by Dorothy Norris.
Good morning, Board members. First want to commend and thank the Board for the leadership that it's shown in this settling compromise between the disparate elements and the differing views that exist on the coast. I think it's a winning proposal. Infrastructure improvements are vital, not just to serve build-out, but for critical tax revenue visitor-serving potential, which is mandated by the Coastal Act. That was the very reason the Coastal Act was ostensibly created, was to enhance and make available to all Californians and allow those coastal communities to serve those people who visit the coast. So highways, water, sewer are all critical, and Half Moon Bay is not the only city that's entitled to four lanes. They have four lanes all the way through. We should have it from Devil's Slide to Half Moon Bay. It's only logical. General plans since 1980 has defined it as a urban area, and we all know that it is. There is an issue I'd like to highlight to you in the minute or so I have left, and that is the 75-unit count. While that is a reasonable compromise, there is a difficulty with regard to the market-rate component of an affordable housing project. That is to say, in the few seconds I have left, that a project that is going to be brought to you, projects will be brought to you that will be attached housing, multi-unit housing, that because of the limited availability of CBGT block rents and so on, the affordable is exempt, but the market-rate component is not. That could wipe out in two projects all the 75 units in one year, or close to it, because we've already been approaching single-family development at 61 to 68 per year right now. So if you could exempt from 75 to 125 for projects that have an affordable rate component for the market rate, and also, lastly, to protect your ability, as you currently have right now, to, by four-fifths majority, you can still declare 200 units per year. George can explain about that.
Thank you. Dorothy Norris, followed by Robert Brown.
My name is Dorothy Norris, and I live in Moss Beach, and I've lived there for six years. I'm a professional marine biologist, and thank you for giving me some of your time. Earth 911 is a cooperative website that allows the public access to updated information on pollution levels of their neighborhoods. It contains information from local monitoring agencies and the U.S. EPA. According to the Earth 911 website last week, there were five of the 28 beaches along the coast side that had bacteria levels exceeding state standards. Most of those sites are located near the town of Half Moon Bay and other developed areas along the coast side. This is an indicator that the coast side population is already having an impact on the environment. Most wastewater treatment plants in southern San Mateo County are located on the bayside. Are we ready economically to look at increased costs that wastewater treatment will cost the bayside? Anyone who lives on the coast side and has been here during the pumpkin festival and during Dream Machines understands that next to agriculture, tourism is our greatest asset. To degrade our beaches and our environment by increasing the population without infrastructure upgrades is a sure way to kill the economy of the coast side. I ask you to consider the planning commissions and the mid-coast councils' LCP plans as the wisest choice for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Brown, followed by Greg Jennison.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Robert Brown. I've lived in San Mateo County since 1943, and I've lived on the coast for the last 18 years. And I'm just here to say that I support the mid-coast community council's LCP plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Jennison, I hope I'm not butchering that too bad, followed by Tom Carey.
Hello, I'm Greg Jamison. I reside in Half Moon Bay, and I just simply wanted to state that I am in support of the subcommittee's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Carey, followed by Bruce Stebbins.
I'm Bruce Stebbins. Tom Carey runs the way back in.
Okay, Bruce, you go first, and then we'll get Tom.
I just wanted to say I'd like the Board to adopt the subcommittee's recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, Tom Carey, followed by Daniel Eckert.
Tom Carey is trustee of the Mary Coulter McDonald 1991 Trust, and I'm their trustee. I would like to speak today in favor of the subcommittee's proposal. I hope you adopt it. It's been a long time in the work. I think one factor I would like to make out, if you go in the area outside the, across the highway of the Miramar Beach Inn called Miramar, all those lots were originally 40 by 110. They're all under individual ownership. And what happened with the enticement that you offered of priority water and sewer, all those lots, the majority, over 85% of them, are on bigger lots because the landowner, with the builder, and with the particular homebuyer, put their lots together because they can get water and sewer. Those are by voluntary. Also, the street work was done in by the citizens who built the home. They're the ones that worked, put the plan together, and worked with the county. So the same thing with affordable housing. We don't have it. Entice the builder, entice the landowner, give us the water and sewer for those lots, and then you'll get that affordable housing component that's not there today. And I support the 2% growth. And going back to the city of Half Moon Bay, their growth limit is based on population, not units. And I just want to make that's a big distinction. So I hope you take that into consideration also. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Daniel Eckert, to be followed by Paul McGregor.
Thank you for having me here, Board. I'm a fourth-generation San Mateo County resident, world's best county to live in. I do not, I support the subcommittee's measure on growth. I would like to see the coast grow. I've been eyeing to build a home out there for the last few years, and what a tangled mess it is. I do need special needs. I don't want to be chased out of the county and move over to Brentwood or the Valley somewhere. I want to stay in San Mateo County, and I propose, I want to stick with your measure, keep growing the coast. Time is now. If you wait any longer, it's going to cost billions to increase the infrastructure and such. You all know that, economics. But please let the coast grow in a smart fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul McGregor, to be followed by Derek Kuldah.
I've got a few issues I want to talk about. Number one, Highway 1 needs to be widened from Capistrano in El Granada all the way down to the end of Half Moon Bay, and at the same time, consider widening Highway 92 all the way over to 280. I have a commercial property in Monterrey, and there's some things that they want to do with it. I'd like to leave it status quo. I'd like to keep my 36-foot height limit, because if you start cutting down the height, it makes my residential portion of the building pretty much unusable, and it won't work for me to pencil it out to have commercial downstairs. There's not a big demand for commercial in the area. There's not a lot of incentives from the sewer or water board or anything like that. I think you need to look into that. I would like to also look into the possibility of you guys really getting in and digging into the drainage issues and stuff like that on the coast side. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Kuldah, followed by Lisa McCaffrey.
Hello, my name is Derek Kuldah. I've lived on the coast about 10 years, last five or six in El Granada. Thank you for hearing me today. The spirit of the subcommittee's recommendation shows a wonderful consideration for the residents and property owners of the coast side. You show your foresight and leadership in preparing for build-out. As you know, when we talk about property rights, we know that the properties don't have rights. It's the owners with the rights. I see in the subcommittee's recommendation a respect for these people. As these property owners are ready to build, the infrastructure should be ready for them. The opposition to the subcommittee's recommendation seem to want these owners to be unprepared for and seem to lack respect for their rights. So I applaud the subcommittee and ask that you accept the recommendations, particularly with regard to the growth rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa McCaffrey, followed by Gil Erickson.
My name is Lisa McCaffrey. I'm a resident of El Granada. My husband Tom and I have been building on the coast for the last 13 years, when we're able to. I am here to support the recommendations of the subcommittee. I do not support the 1% growth limit. Everyone has been talking about jobs and employment on the coast. What about the construction industry? Excessive limits on build-out would affect this also. Local tradesmen and women and ancillary businesses, like Ocean Shore Hardware and Half Moon Bay Garden Supply, benefit by this construction. Please do not jeopardize these local jobs by decreasing build-out any further. I would love to have my husband build on the coast. I'd love to keep him off the highway. It would make my life a lot easier, so thank you.
And our final speaker is Dennis Doherty. Mike, I had earlier called for all speaker slips at the beginning of the meeting, so I'm sorry. Okay? Dennis Doherty, please.
My name is Dennis Doherty. The build-out number on the coast is like the capacity of a bucket. If we add 75 units a year to that bucket, that's a growth rate, we're filling the bucket at about 1% per year. But the, even though the existing building cap is 125 units, we've only been adding about 50 units per year. So we can expect it, we can be expected to continue to grow at about that same rate. 50 units per year means we're only filling our bucket at about 0.8% per year. And at that rate, we will not reach build-out, 6,200 units, until about 2,060. So 75 units is a low rate. We're probably going to build out at a much lower rate than that, and at that lower rate, we are not going to reach build-out for a very, very long time. Let's see, in conclusion, what I would ask is that in order to maintain the 50 units per year, we need to set the cap, as we discussed before, a little bit higher, so we can, we can have this natural fluctuation with the demand, the annual demand in building permits, because some years it's been low, it's 14, back in 1990. The main part of this spread has been, say, 20 to maybe 60-something. So if you have a cap of 75, we'll average only 50 a year, but it'll allow that to fluctuate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is the end of our speakers on this public hearing. We'd like to, the Board will now move to some discussion. As we do that, we will first take a motion to close this public hearing on these items.
Some moved.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let me suggest that my, my suggestion is as follows, that we allow each Board member to, as they would wish, to make any comments regarding issues that they would like the staff to further consider and work on, based on the public comment that we've heard. It is not my intention, unless the Board disagrees, to start us through each of the 23 specific items today. My thought is that we'll take general comments for the staff to record, and that we would then come back at a meeting to be set, probably sometime in January, where we would start through the 23 items. And the process at that point for the public is that on each of the items, the Board will take a tentative action. In some cases, we've done that already. We would be reaffirming that tentative action. Once the Board has completed tentative action on all items that would be considered in the local coastal plan update, the staff then needs to go and prepare the very specific ordinances implementing documents and transmittal documents for the Coastal Commission. So there are probably at least two more meetings before we have a document that is prepared for transmittal to the Coastal Commission. If my colleagues agree, I would suggest that we start with some general comments from Board members. Acceptable?
Acceptable.
Okay. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first, just with a couple items and others might come up. There's a couple of things that I heard yesterday, today, and I heard the other day, and one of them deals with the Highway 1 widening. I think when, if I'm reading this correctly, what I read here is that Highway 1 could be, could be widened up to four lanes. I think the thing that concerns me is I think there's an assumption that that's really what's going to happen, and maybe it's part of the wording. I think the things that I heard these days is people are more worried about pedestrian safety, bicycle lanes, and then in some areas, some ability, even like they do on 92, where you might have some of the slower lanes to the right, so you can have certain areas where it gets a little wider. But I think the vision that I have when I read that at first blush was that we're going to have this major, you know, like having Highway 280 or something going through the middle of the coast. I don't think that was the intention. So I'd like staff to maybe look at some, you know, additional wording that would talk about what some of the other possibilities might be, rather than talking about this big four-lane freeway, because I'm not sure that was the intent of that recommendation. And another one I heard today was, and it sort of brought me back to my days on the daily city council, that whole issue of affordable second units. I like the idea. The concern I have is how manageable is that? And again, you know, I have that issue of people who have property to be able to have families living with them, and is that going to make it difficult? Because it is true in daily say that at least 50% probably have family members living in those second units. I'd like to see if we can look into how realistic that issue is of affordable second units and how we control it if that were the case. Because I guess the legal side of that has me, I'm sort of perplexed. I don't know how you do it. And so, and I'm sort of mixed about it to begin with, but it's really the legality of it. How do you do it? How do you control it? You know, how do you police it? You know, when you have larger groups, it's all affordable housing. It's a little easier to manage than these individual ones. I'm going to start with those two to begin with. I'm sure I'll have more comments before the afternoon is out.
Supervisor Jacob Gibson.
Thank you, Agent, for bringing those up, because I share those concerns as well. The other one that keeps coming up has to do with flooding and stormwater management types of issues. And I don't know how we can separate some of those issues as well either, because I know that we, through CCAC, there's some work that gets done. And I think, but I do realize that with the drainage situations and some of the other factors that's been mentioned, there probably needs to be some separation of some of those, and we can see which ones actually fit in with the update, and whether that may be a better means by which we can address it.
Supervisor Church.
I noticed there was some question about the cap of the number of units that the Board has had discretion to allow previously. I don't think that has been addressed in these recommendations. And previously, I think it was 200 that the Board would have the discretion to go up to 200 units in a given year. I think we should clarify that issue, and I assume that the subcommittee's intent is that the Board will not have the discretion to do that. As far as the comments regarding Highway 1, in the spirit of interagency cooperation, I think that rather than provide for an outright revision to the LCP that would allow up to four lanes, we should word it in a similar fashion as we have with item number five, dealing with the infrastructure. And that is that we would coordinate with the other agencies, with the City of Half Moon Bay and the Transportation Authority on highway improvements with the new Measure 8 funds. I think we should perhaps consider rewording item number rewording item number five in a similar way that, that we would coordinate with the Town of Half Moon Bay to improve the level of service. Perhaps that should be the wording, rather than providing for four lanes. Direct, directed simply to the issue, the level of service is not adequate. That's what situation is. That's what we're hearing from the community as well as the Coastal Commission. So, you know, communities should work together on shared problems, and certainly traffic is a shared problem. So we should work with the other agencies on a, on a shared solution. On the lot merger program, I think checker boarding is a legitimate concern. The, the problem, basically, in our goal to reach lot merger is that owners of contiguous lots can make a lot more money in developing their lots separately. So I think the issue becomes whether the incentives are adequate. Are they adequate enough to discourage the practice of checker boarding? I'm not sure that they are. I, I don't know that a 5% reduction in the building permit fees is adequate. And I would like to see staff come back with some other options. What would it cost the county to offer a higher reduction in building fees, a 10%, 15%, or even a 20% reduction in building fees? If we're trying to reach lot merger, which I think is the objective, then we need to make those incentives worthwhile. So I'd like to hear back from staff on that issue. And if we're going to allow this 18-month period for voluntary mergers, I would suggest that we, we monitor the transfers during that period of time. Because checker boarding is a practice that can be utilized to circumvent the goal of lot mergers. So if it appears that that's a practice that's being engaged in, then I'd like to see a policy in place where we would then go to a mandatory lot merger program prior to the expiration of the 18-month period, if it becomes a problem. And what I'd like to see is staff develop some kind of policy for us to consider in that regard, a definition as to what constitutes checker boarding. Lot-altering transfers necessarily might be deemed to be, would fall, fall in that category. So I'd like to ask staff to work with County Council and the County Recorder to come up with a plan where those transfers can be monitored and a definition as to what constitutes checker boarding. And lastly, on that point, I think it's important to get the word out. This is an issue that would need to be publicized. And I'd like to hear back from staff on how they intend to do that, how they would publish, publicize this issue, what notices would be sent. And so that's something that, to ensure the success of the program, I think would be something that would need to be done. The, I'd also like to have staff report back on a new reallocation chart for priority uses. I, on, on the, on the wells, I endorse, I endorse the, the affordable housing as a priority, but not at the expense of failed wells. And so I'd like to see some kind of policy that we could consider in that regard. And I think, I'll let it go with that for now.
First stab, well done. Supervisor Hill?
You know, as a member of that Subcommittee that either had good comments or bad comments or however, I, you know, we really spent a lot of time looking at the issues. And I know in terms of the incentive program for lot mergers, the building community was involved in suggesting some of those, but I do think that more may be necessary. I, I think Mark and Adrian and Rose really hit the nail on the head in terms of the issues that, and the questions that, that I think need further analysis. I, as much as it was said that we kind of staring or, or we've heard all the arguments before, I don't think it's really true. Because I've enjoyed listening to the 60 the other day and the 30 or so today. We always get a little bit out of every one in each comment. And the letters that we've received even today, I think are so valuable. And what I want to do is just take them all back and really dissect them and, and look for those, those issues that haven't been, been really analyzed. And, and I think we can, we can bring those, those forward. But I, you know, there are a number of things that I learned over the last few, few meetings, and a couple of changes that I would suggest to the, to the Subcommittee's recommendations as well. So I appreciate everyone's comments.
Okay, let me just add some comments for myself. I want to, comments that have been made previously about Highway One, substandard lot merger, affordable housing, second units, and drainage, I all, would echo those. The, a couple of other issues for me, one is, there was a lot of this public discussion last week about the Burnham Strip. And I think the, the goal, I think, that the Subcommittee was trying to achieve was to, you know, to try to figure out how to maintain that as, you know, the community plan at one point intended as open space and work within the, the issues of property ownership there. Based on the public comment, I don't know whether we hit the mark. And so I think staff needs to take a look at that issue. The, the Farm Bureau last week offered to do, work with staff to look at a voluntary easement and conservation easement program in lieu of some, some of the proposed land restrictions in some of the rural area. I'd like to see what that would look like, so that we could possibly consider that. The, the final issue for me to, to mention today goes back to something Mark commented on around failed wells. I actually was in a meeting yesterday with the staff of the Montero Water and Sanitary District regarding failed wells. And somehow, we need to find a way that when water is available, to get some priority for those wells that, that are failing. I mean, I think our public goal ought to be at some point to, you know, get people off wells and get them onto some kind of public water system. And I know that is complicated in a place where there is not sufficient water at the moment. Hopefully, efforts to secure more water will be successful. But I do think we need to take a look at the, the issue regarding wells that are failing and, and how we might deal with those in terms of priority.
Richard, over the Caltrans land a little bit?
Sure. You want me to?
No, I, well, go, go ahead. You're, you're on.
I'm on a roll?
You're on a roll.
I don't know about that. The, let me just say, there's a lot of comment, public comment about the Caltrans bypass land. And certainly, the Subcommittee, as we met, wanted to see that land secured as open space. And in our conversations with Caltrans, we believe that if we continue a cooperative spirit with them, it is far more achievable as a goal than if we enter into what they would perceive to be a confrontive mode by changing a zoning on that land immediately. It doesn't preclude us from doing that at some future point. But at the moment, they certainly evidenced in a meeting that we had with the District Director and others on their staff, a great willingness to work with us in a cooperative manner relative to our goals for that land. And we'd like to work with them in that cooperative spirit, hence the, the nature of the recommendation, just so our colleagues are aware of that.
Jerry, do you want to add something to that?
No. I, I think you covered everything, Rich, very well. It, that meeting was, was extremely beneficial and I think informative. And, and I think we, we share common goals with Caltrans and, and over the future use of the, of that land and how it will be, hopefully remain as, as open space.
Adrian?
I just have one. I appreciate you bringing up the Burnham Strip and the easement issue, because those are two I thought of after we started talking. But there was one more, and I wrote a note, and maybe this could be clarified. Under the recommendation, we talk about the AO district boundaries and allowing for three persons per parcel and changing it to one person per 600, 1,667 square feet. I guess my question, one, is that driven by the FAA? And two, if, if I think about it in relationship to my own office building, or an office building, that's a pretty expensive way to do business. Either way, really is. And if, if the purpose is, and I heard a lot of people talking about trying to create more commercial on the coast side so people can work, to me, is that an absolute because of the FAA? Or is it something, it just seemed like if you think of one person per 1,600, that's a very expensive way to do business. Therefore, could, could we increase the number of people within that square footage as long as it fits within the guidelines of the AO district? Does that make sense to you?
I understand the question. I think we'll have to work with staff on, on the answer to that.
I guess that's what I want to see, if there's a better way, because it just increases the number of jobs available, as long as it's safe. And to me, that's a very expensive way to do business this, this way. So if we could just look at that and see if there's ways to increase the number of opportunities for jobs, is really what that boils down to.
Okay. Any other comments on this item today?
Then. One comment. I'd like to thank both you, Rich and Jerry, for your work as a Subcommittee on this issue. It's not an easy issue, and you both did really an outstanding job in giving us at least something to start with as we go forward. So, thank you both.
Thank you. The staff will, will do some work and once, with an idea of the, what timeline they might meet. Board meetings are scheduled in January on the 10th, 10th, 24th, and 31st. I don't think we would make the 10th. Whether we can make the 24th or 31st, I'm not sure. And so, once we have that information, we will make sure that everyone who is on our mailing list is notified and that, that we provide the proper public notice that the Board would be taking this matter up again. We did close the public hearing on this matter, so I do not anticipate that there will be any public testimony when the Board reconsider's this, as the Board at that point will be deliberating on what has previously been discussed. The, there is one final item on today's agenda, and that's Board Member Committee Reports. Supervisor Tissier?
Yes, I would like to adjourn in memory of John Hilsendagger. He is the father of a Daly City resident, good friend of mine, Kathy Paulson, and also Tim Paulson's grandfather. My sympathies go out to their family.
Supervisor Hill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to adjourn in memory of Dr. Frank Reynolds, a longtime San Mateo resident and general practitioner. He would make house calls and only stop when patients stopped asking for them, which is kind of a unique medical practice today. He had a thriving family practice in San Mateo, was known for thoroughly informing his patients and engaging them in their course of treatment before it became customary to do so. He took care of multiple generations of the same families. Dr. Reynolds is survived by his wife, five children, and six grandchildren. Also, Bruce Hamilton, the Executive Director of HIP Housing, was in the audience this morning and didn't quite make it for the public comment area. But he asked that I pass out to the Board the 2006 HIP Housing calendar, which is a beautiful calendar that shows many of the students in San Mateo County's expressions and their sharing of what it is like to have a home. And that's what the pictures of the calendar show from month to month, is their renditions. And it was quite a challenging contest with thousands of entries. And then there was a selection committee that selected those, those homes and those, those pictures that are examples. So we thank HIP Housing and their great work in providing shared housing in San Mateo County, which is meeting our, trying to meet some of our housing needs.
Thank you. Supervisor Jacob Gibson?
No report.
Supervisor Church?
No report.
Just two quick items from me. First, just to advise my colleagues that at 2:00 this afternoon in Santa Clara County, the Board of Supervisors there is considering an item relative to a Stanford University and a trail that Stanford had committed to build as a part of a land use agreement with the County of Santa Clara. The recommendation from the County Manager is that Stanford be allowed to not build such a trail on their property, but rather to approach San Mateo County and offer us an opportunity to build a trail along Alpine Road. There are serious issues that we would need to consider should Santa Clara this afternoon decide that their mitigation could be met in our county, if we agreed. And we will, if that Board this afternoon votes in support of their staff recommendation, this will be an issue that will be coming to us in the new year. Having said that, I'd also like to point out that this is the last meeting of the year. And I have a long-planned vacation that will take me away on January 10th. So I will not be here for a reorganization meeting at the beginning of the year. So I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to my colleagues for the support that I received this year as President of the Board. It, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to serve as a facilitator for this group. And I appreciate also the great support that staff provided during this year. And so with that, again, thank you for, for the opportunity to, to serve in this capacity this year. And I wish all and everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and the best for the new year.
Rich, thank you for an exceptional year and for your leadership. It's been wonderful, and we appreciate it. And when you get back, we'll have a nice gift for you, and we'll have a little celebration for your, for your year. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary.
The Board has a 130 service award ceremony, and that concludes the balance of the business for this year.